Greetings, in the name of the State of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Seigerville and the town of Ascotus in the State of Maine, qualified to open town affairs to assemble at the Grace Bible Community Room, 40 W. Hill Road, on March 17th, 2022, at 6:00 in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles, to wit: Article 1, to choose a moderator to designate as deputy. Are there any nominations?
All ready.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Do they have three ballots cast?
I can hear that. Really? No, that's outside my frequency. It's years of shooting. Congratulations, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Paul.
Would you say we all stand up and lift like we flag of the nation, we all hold out? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will do the moment silence. Thank you. Well, thank you for trusting me again. It's a dangerous thing, but I appreciate it all the same. How I do it? Anybody wishes to speak? Appreciate it. I'll call them. Be civil, or I'll call the sheriff. Okay? We need a motion on most of the articles, and a second in the discussion, and then we'll have a vote. Article 2, to adopt the Maine Moderator's Manual published by the Maine Municipal Association as the authority on the rules and procedures for conducting the annual town meetings. Is there any objection to us accepting that article? Hearing none, without objection, we will use the Maine Moderator's Manual. They have a great deal. Article 3, to ascertain non-resident speakers are present and whether or not inhabitants wish to call upon them to be heard. Do we have any non-resident speakers? Mr. Sterns, anyone else? We need a motion on this if you want to appear, Mr. Sterns.
Motion.
In a second.
We have a motion in a second. We have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, a vote, Mr. Sterns.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and I'll do it right from here, and I promise to be brief and civil because I do not want the sheriff coming to haul me away. My information, I'm Paul Sterns Gilford. For those who may not know me, state representative in my last term, will be finishing out this year as a representative. It's been an honor to do that. Glad to pass the baton on to the next person to represent this House district. And I want to let you know that my contact information is in here. The best way, if you're going to reach me by telephone, is either text my cell phone or call my cell phone. If you call down in Augusta, it has to go through several renditions. It's a lot easier. We're small enough and know each other well enough. It's a lot easier to just call and leave voicemail. So I'll let you get on with this activity, which in my opinion is the best form of democracy that we have in the world, is the New England Town Meeting. Well, thank you.
I have served for eight years for Paul Sterns. He has done a fabulous job. We have term limits in Maine, and therefore he's out of the job in December. But I think we are sure appreciative of him. Thank you, sir. Article 4, to select one select man, successor, and overseer of the four for a three-year term and to fix compensation. We have nominations. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to nominate Dale Gray.
We have a nomination, Dale Gray. We have a second, we have a second. Other nominations. Anyone? Yes, sir. I thought you were nominating someone. If there are no other nominations, I would accept the motion for nominations to cease. You have the motion, we have second. Second. Discussion on that motion. Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Bring down your ballot. Mr. Dale Gray, sitting right here, is a candidate. Of course, you have the option to write his name if that's your desire. So I can just say one of the three offices that we have to do by written ballot.
You're going to make me vote myself, Julie?
Yes.
And you didn't call what you...
I did. A writing would work, right?
Yes, it would.
I wrote writing.
They count, but she can refuse it.
Strategy isn't worth it. To try.
Yet. Have all voted and we should vote? The show of how close the ballot clerk is.
Beg your pardon?
We're supposed to have three ballot clerks. We have to have another ballot clerk. Someone like that acts as a ballot clerk. We need three. Somebody here? That's a good help.
Oh, there is a bride, thank you.
I was looking. I was actually trying to see if she was... She was... Not happening.
Congratulations, over to Dale Gray. Five votes coming. Could you stand up, please? Show everybody who you are.
Thank you.
Now, we've got to pay him something. He needs to fix the compensation. Apparently, it's $800, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I believe that's what puts it here in the article. Somebody make a motion.
Make a motion for $800.
Hearing none, stop. We have a second. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, a vote. To elect two school board members for a three-year term. Nominations? Yes, sir?
Nominate Lori Johnson.
Lori Johnson has been nominated. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Other nominations? Somebody else gets nominated. We could do both at the same time. Any nominations? Can I have one more? Who really wants to serve on the school board? Okay. I will entertain a motion, nomination ceased. We have a second. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? This is the third office that requires a written ballot. We can have a ballot, please. Somebody's got to vote. We have three ballots.
Brian can still vote.
He was contested?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I got 130 votes in California against against Kentucky. Well, you can't beg people for...
Beginning of a career.
All voted that we should vote? Go ahead and tell them, if you would do it.
Three for Lori Ann Johnson.
Three votes for Lori Ann Johnson. Would you stand up, please?
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
We have one more. Can we get a nomination for someone else to be on the school board? Well, then, I believe law, fitness, and selectmen can fill the position.
That's correct.
Leave it to that. The next one is to elect one sanitary district trustee for a three-year term. We have nominations?
I have a nominee, Precon.
We have a nomination, Rick Powell. We have a second?
Second.
Other nominations? Hearing none, seeing none? I will move, I would entertain a motion for nominations to cease. We have the motion, we have a second. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, a vote. I don't think we need to do this one, but ballot in favor of Rick Powell? Please raise your hand. If you don't like him, you can... Although, yeah, I'll sit next to you, Rick Powell. I don't know what's going on. Okay, that takes care of the... Elections. Out of five, to save the town, on Saturday night, where taxes on real estate and personal property shall be due and payable, and setting rate of interest to be charged on taxes unpaid after said date. Recommendation is the due date of August 31st. The maximum allowed is 4% for Title 36 MRSA, 505 for the S. A. And this is what is recommended by the Board of Selectmen, at 4%. We have a motion to accept this article. We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion. Anybody? If you favor the article, is I ready? Please raise your hand. If you're opposed, raise your hand. To vote. Article 6, to save the town or authorize prepayment of real estate and personal property taxes and to set and repay no interest thereon. We have a motion?
Motion.
We have a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? To vote. Article 7, to save the town, in accordance with 36 MRSA, 7506-A, will vote that a taxpayer who pays an amount in excess of that finally assessed on April 1st, 2022, shall be repaid the amount of overpayment plus interest from the date of the overpayment at the annual rate of 2%. And this is recommended by this Board of Selectmen at 2%. We have a motion? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, if you favor the article, is I ready? Please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 8, to save the town will allow a discount of 2% on taxes paid in full before 5:00 P. M. on July 29th, 2022, and vote will allow for payments received on taxes to be applied to the taxpayer's oldest outstanding tax bill. We need a motion to accept that article. We have a motion, we have a second. Second, discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, if you favor the article, is I ready? Please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands. It's a vote. Article 9, to save the town will verify, ratify, all the drafts incurred in the town operations for 2021. Fire 1782 dollars and 65 cents from the first day, $2,201 49 cents, health and sanitation, $9,276 and 90 cents. Mining part, 506 and 5 cents, for a total of $43,767 and 9 cents, less contingency of $10,000. The total overdraft is $33,767 and 9 cents. We need a motion to accept the $33,767 and 9 cents, although proven. Yes, sir? We have that motion, we have a second? We have a second, discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, if you favor the article? If you figure $33,767 and 9 cents in it, please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 10, to save the town will authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to sell and dispose real estate and personal property acquired by the town for nonpayment of taxes thereon. The revenue received from tax-acquired property shall be used to pay the back taxes, and any additional revenues shall be put into the general fund on set terms as they deem advisable and execute quitting deeds for said property. We have a motion to accept the article, correct? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Discussion? Anyone? Hearing none, request for discussion? If you favor Article 11, is I ready? Please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 12, to see if the town will authorize the municipal officers to spend only those funds necessary for the operation of the town assigned to them in the period from January 1st, 2023 to the 2023 annual town meeting. Can we have a motion on the article? To accept the article, correct? We have a second, we have a second. Discussion? Anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, a vote. Article 13, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to accept or refuse any donations or gifts on behalf of the town. We need a motion?
We have a motion.
Do we have a motion to accept the article? We have a second, we have a second. Discussion? Dale Johnson, in the day, somebody wanted to know why they couldn't just accept it. From past time, everybody give the house to the town. If you favor the article, do you have a discussion?
Yes, so does that authorize to spend the donation?
Does that authorize what?
To spend the donation?
To suspend it?
To spend it.
To spend it, no. It only authorizes them to accept. Doesn't say anything thinking about spending it. Okay? Anyone else? Hearing none, if you favor the article, is I ready? Please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to apply, borrow, and accept grants from private state and federal agencies that do not require matching funds from the town or impose contractual obligations on the town. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to accept it? We have a second. Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, if you favor the article, is I ready? Please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to apply, borrow, and accept grants from private state and federal agencies that do not require matching funds from the town or impose contractual obligations on the town. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to accept it? We have a second. Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, if you favor the article, is I ready? Please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 15, to see if the town will allow the municipal officers to accept revenue generated from plumbing permits and to expend these funds to the licensed plumbing instructor as compensation. Can we have a motion? Do we have a motion to accept the article? We need a second. We have a second. Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, request for discussion? If you favor the article, please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 16, shall the town vote to give the monies in the amount of $767.92 raised from the state snowmobile registration received in 2022 to the Four Winds Snowmobile Club? Move to accept the article, give the money? We have a second. Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, please raise your hands if you approve the article. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to allow the municipal officers to expend revenue from the overlay as necessary to account for fractional differences in computing the tax rate abatements. And computing tax rate abatements, if any, and the 2% discount for taxes paid in full before 5:00 P. M. July 29th, 2022. We have a motion? We do have a motion. We have a second, we have a second. Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, if you favor the article, please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to allow the municipal officers to enter into a 15-year contract with central main power companies to change the street lighting to LED, saving an average of $1,684.50 yearly. And this is the recommendation of the Selectmen and Budget Committee for urgent years, vote. Do we have a motion? We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second. Discussion? Don't be out.
Are all the street lamps lit now? There they are. They came through town the other night. It seemed like coming up after the cemetery. Was that one on top of the hill? Wasn't it?
We need you to stand up, please.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
That would be...
The reason I asked, I didn't know what, you know, maybe the town voted sometime.
No, by voting, yes, that would, these would go to LED, so they would be working.
Ma'am?
I was just wondering, are these going to be downcast lights or are they going to be just the regular streetlights that allow light pushing above? Do you have any idea?
I don't.
I don't. Dale probably gets one.
I believe they're going to be the downcast. Guilford's doing the same thing. And so if you go through Guilford, you're already starting to see some of them over there.
Anyone else?
When would they change the lights? Yeah, when would they change the light? Any idea?
We have to sign the contract, that's why we're voting on it. And so as soon as we sign the contract, I'll find out.
Anyone else?
Hopefully, this year.
Yes.
Anyone else? Hearing none, if you favor the article, is I ready? Please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 19, to save the town will vote to move fire department equipment reserve of $8978 and firehouse improvement reserve $4,328 to one account by a pack of reserve for a total of $13,306. And this is recommended by the selectmen and the fire team. Those who need years, vote. We have a motion, we have a motion, we have a second. Discussion? Anybody? Sounds like it's tidying up the books a little bit. If there are, if there's no discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed, vote. Article 20, to see what sum of money the town will vote to fund approved Act 21 to 35 inclusive, exile $245,000. Main revenue share, $145,000. Local road assistance, $31,500. Dedicated revenue smart trust, $3,050. APRA, I believe that stands for American Mission Plan Act. Second train, $67,013. This lady's revenue, in parentheses, is the library. $17,650. Other revenue, $40,835. Home state exemption, and that's an estimate, $100,000 for a total of $650,048. And the Board of Selectmen are urging the years, vote. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second. Discussion? Anyone? Anyone, Mr. Discusses? Hearing none, request? If you favor the articles, is I ready? Please raise your hand. If you're opposed, raise your hand, it's a vote. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to use up to $15,000 from undesigned revenue in the event of overdrafts, unforeseen events, or emergencies. Any use of this contingency arrangement must be noted on at a select board meeting, and the expenditures will be listed in the subsequent town report. Transfer of undesigned revenues in excess of $15,000 must be authorized by a local express town meeting. And this is recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee. We have a motion? Got a motion, we have a second. Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, if you favor Article 21, is I ready? Please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 22, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate to the general government, not to exceed $242,998. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee, $242... Excuse me. Do we have a motion? Do you have a motion to accept the article, is I ready? We have a second. Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, all those in favor? Yes, all those opposed, vote. Article 23, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for fire practice, not to exceed $55,387. As the recommendation by the Selectmen, fire team, and Budget Committee years, We need a motion, we have a motion, we have a second. To accept the articles, is I ready? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the articles, is I ready? All those opposed, it's a vote. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from revenue to the purpose of animal welfare, not to exceed $3,200. And $3,200 is the recommendation of the Budget Committee and the Selectmen. Do we have a motion? We do have a motion to accept the article. We have a second. Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Vote. Article 25, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for protection, including the streetlights and heights, not to exceed $46,200. And $46,200 is the recommendation of the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. We need a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, all those in favor of the article? Is that ready? All those opposed, it's a vote. Article 26, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate to public works, not to exceed $461,171. And $461,171 is the recommendation of the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. We need a motion. My God, we don't die. We got a motion, we got a, we got a second. To accept the article, is I ready? Do we have any discussion? Anyone? Hearing none, if you favor the articles, is I ready? Please raise your hands. If you're opposed, raise your hands, it's a vote. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to move $118,510 from public works equipment reserve to the general fund for purpose of payment. Recommendation by the Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee, Do we have a motion? We have a motion to accept. We have, we have a, uh, second? Discussion? Yes, sir.
I'm not trying to be a rabble-rouser. I'm not questioning the board and this and that.
I used to be.
Well, I know, but I've been before.
I don't know if you're down to jail for it or what.
That money is, is the town's. We already have it. We've had it. I just feel that there's a, you know, an ostrich in the room here, an elephant. And I think that that money, I'm going to encourage a no vote and then get that money, spend a little bit of money on some summer roads. I mean, we don't seem, the problem's not going to go away. It's getting worse and worse. And, you know, a lot of people are frustrated and this is bad. Granted, there's going to be less money for paving. Been paving a long time. Doing a great job coming along. I don't, you know, I think a hundred eighteen thousand won't be asking a whole lot of money that we already have that could be used in peace. A lot of people as well. That's just me. You know, whatever the vote is, it's fine. But I'm going to encourage a no vote.
Excuse me, did you, where did you say you wanted to spend the money?
I'm going to spend it on some summer roads.
On summer roads?
Summer roads, yes.
Okay. Further discussion? Anyone? What was yours? Go ahead.
Uh, just speaking to that, first, we can't redirect it. We can't change the warrant. So the hundred and eighteen that we, if we don't use it, it's going to sit in the bank. And we're going to end up doing less paving. Unless we have another special meeting in the summertime to ask to finish the paving, which we've done two years in a row. Our thought process behind moving this money out of the equipment reserve is we've essentially sold all the equipment to the town. We, the load is gone. The only thing left is the dozer, and we're going to relist that for spring. To have this money tagged where it is, you couldn't fix summer roads with it.
Well, no, but it would be a bigger advantage than the fifteen.
When it's time to fix summer roads, we should address that as a standalone. But this money right now can't be used for anything.
Okay. When do you see that time?
This year. I mean, we can start that process. We, we haven't really had a road committee that's, you know, suggested a particular road, but we're working on all of them. I know this, the gravel roads are a mess right now, but. And we did, we did some gravel work last year. We did grading when we could get it done. But, but this, this, they really, uh, they're, to me, it's conflating an issue.
Other discussion? Anyone else? Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I live off one of those so-called gravel roads, and it was done very horribly, very horribly this year. I pay good taxes on that road, and it was thrown down with stupid gravel. It's lowest grade you can get. And it was done in pieces instead of the whole thing. Years back, we used to have good gravel from start to finish, twice a year, fall and spring. We don't get that now. That's what I got to say.
What road is, uh?
I'm on McNorton Hill.
McNorton Hill.
I got it right now, but I know that it's a mess right now. But that, that's normal for spring, but. The summer, it was, it was horrible. Just, just horrible.
Anyone else? Wish to speak? Anybody? Yes, sir?
The borough road?
The borough road?
Yeah. It's, uh, I almost got stuck probably six times in different places down from here. But I'm just looking for it to dry up. Bring something light.
Others? Anyone? Okay. If that's all? If you wish to accept article twenty-seven, as I read it, with one hundred eighteen thousand five hundred and ten dollars in it, please raise your hands. If you wish to oppose, please raise your hands. It's a vote. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the first trench, sixty-seven thousand thirteen dollars from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, AKA American Rescue Plan Act or APRA funds, received by the town from the federal government for the purpose of paper. Recommended by the board of selectmen and budget committee is sixty-seven thousand thirteen dollars. Do we have a motion to this? We have a motion? We have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody? Yes, sir?
I'm not too familiar with the fund. But are there any conditions or recommendations that come along with that? You'd lighten this a little bit?
You listen to the-
Yeah.
Can I ask first? Is this part of the infrastructure fund?
Yes, yes.
The original APRA fund? The original APRA fund didn't be used for broadband and some of that.
Not any longer.
They changed it all.
This is the final plan.
Infrastructure fund may be used for all.
Correct.
Exactly. That's it.
That's what it is?
Yes.
Does that answer your question, sir?
I guess so.
Anyone else? Here and seeing none, if you favor the articles, is I read it? With the sixty-seven thousand thirteen dollars, which is recommended by the selectmen and budget committee, please raise your hands. If you oppose it, please raise your hands. It's a vote. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the second trench, I believe I'm bouncing that right. Sixty-seven thousand thirteen dollars from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, AKA American Rescue Plan Act or APRA funds, received by the town for the, by the federal government, from the federal government for the purpose of paper. And that too is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. Do we have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second? Discussion? Here and seeing none, all those who favor? All those who oppose? Vote. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of paper, recommended by the board of selectmen and budget committee, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second? We have a second discussion? Anyone? Mr. New?
What's the estimations running for paving this year for town? Where are we at?
Given the price of the toll and the problem?
Well, I know, it's been being sorted.
Go ahead.
I had a, I just had a rough estimate for the two miles of Silver's Mills Road that needs to be done. That would be approximately five hundred thousand. It's approximately a hundred and ten thousand for the in-town roads. But that was prior to the war and the inflation now. So I'm not sure what it will be, but that was a rough estimate just a couple of months ago.
So would you rather do it in town and do some of this puzzle a little bit later? Or what's, where's-
I think that two miles of Silver's Mills from twenty-three to Broadway is in pretty rough shape.
Well, the holes that they left there, but I mean, the rest of the road is better than it has been. It's still better. I had to stop paying tractor taxes due to the fact you had to stop paying testing on the dumping. But it's a lot better than it has been. And I don't know where I'm supposed to spend where, but. That's up to you folks.
Any other discussion? If you favor the articles, is I read it? Please raise your hands. If you oppose it, raise your hands. It's a vote. It probably doesn't take long to figure out Silver's Mill, so it takes a little attention, doesn't it? To see what's, article thirty-one, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for health and sanitation, not to exceed one hundred thirteen thousand one hundred dollars. And that is the recommendation of the selectmen and the budget committee. We have a motion? We do have a motion? We have a second? We have a second discussion? Here and seeing none, all those who favor? All those who oppose? It's a vote. Article thirty-two, to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for monument lot, from the monument lot reserve, not to exceed eight hundred dollars. Eight hundred dollars is the recommendation, the selectmen and the budget committee. We have a motion? We have a second? We have a second? Do we have discussion? Anybody? Here and seeing none, all those who favor? All those who oppose? It's a vote. Article thirty-three, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for municipal welfare, not to exceed four thousand dollars. And the recommendation is by the board of selectmen and the budget committee, four thousand dollars. We have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second? We have, we have a second discussion? Anybody? Can I ask, does the state pay in your back?
Yes.
They are? Good. If you favor the article, four thousand dollars in it, please raise your hands. If you oppose it, please raise your hands. It's a vote. Article thirty-four, to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for parks and recreation, from the recreation reserve, not to exceed nine thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars, which is the recommendation of the selectmen and budget committee, nine thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Do we have a second? Uh, do we have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second? We have a second discussion? Yes, sir?
Yeah. I would like to understand why they chose to take all the money out of the reserve. That's something, since I've been a resident for the last nineteen years, I've never seen it done before.
I don't know.
Could you please speak to that?
Why was all the money taken from reserves? That's the question.
I, we, as you, there's kind of a theme here. We, we basically cleaned up all of these little reserve accounts. What, from an accounting standpoint, we had, it seemed like a dozen of these little buckets of money. And essentially taxpayers have put that money in there, and we're going to put it to use. With inflation, this nine grand will probably be worth eight grand next year if we don't spend it. So that was the mindset, anyway.
On behalf of the park and rec committee, we were never asked for a recommendation to take that or raise it from taxes like we normally do. In fact, all that money was donations. The credit union donated a bunch of that money that's in that fund. So it wasn't like taxpayers put it all in there. That money was saved so we could replace playground wood in other day projects. It wasn't meant to mow the lawn and do the yard jobs.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Anyone? Here and seeing none, if you favor the article, nine thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars, the recommendation amount, please raise your hands. If you oppose it, raise your hands. And I think you probably ought to come.
There's no way you're going to do this. I know.
If you, no. If you favor the article, please stand up.
Can you ask, make sure to say that?
Please stand up if you favor the article.
Paul?
Paul, before we, is, am I allowed to comment further on this before we finish this vote?
We have a vote, and the vote's not final, right?
I just want everybody to understand that if you, there will be no parks and rec budget if this doesn't pass. Okay? You can continue with the vote.
It would take a special town meeting then?
Yep, correct.
Right, right.
It would.
Right.
Okay. If you favor the article, did you wish to speak, ma'am?
I do. So you took the money, or their money, to pay for next year's park and recreation?
We took the rec reserve money to pay for rec.
Their money?
It's, it's the town's money.
Well, whatever.
To pay for the rec department, yes.
If there were donations within that money.
For the rec.
They should belong to, you know, they shouldn't, they should get whatever they got for the next year on top of that money, is my opinion.
Another example, the Legion gave us a very generous gift that we could use for the rec and the monument. We're using it. That's what it's for.
But was it meant to pay for parks or?
It's meant to maintain and run those, those entities. That's, so, and those the only purposes we can use them for.
I figured it was more intended for the big project.
You're assuming.
What?
You're assuming.
That's what the rec is doing. For the last twenty-some years, we've always raised a sum of money from, we've never taken all the money from the reserve. In fact, that's how we built up the reserves. We used to put a thousand dollars into the reserves. Either way, I'm disappointed that I think the parks and rec community should have been informed that this is how they're going to fund over here.
You can be duped if that happens.
Yes, sir?
I'd like to request a vote by written ballot, please.
You don't need to request it. You probably ought to do it. It was a, another ballot.
If you favor, any other discussion? Anyone else? If you favor, yes, ma'am.
I just, I, I want to be clear about what happens. If this, if this does not pass, what happens to that money?
It won't be spent.
It just stays in the reserve?
Yeah, there is no budget out, there is no money allocated for the rec.
But it stays in the reserve?
But it stays in the reserve. It'll be there next year for another discussion.
Okay, so parks and rec won't have any access to that money?
Any money? It would be just like if we didn't pass the fire department budget earlier today. There would be no fire department.
And what service does that give to the town by not having money for the parks and recs to spend?
That's why we're voting on the article right now.
I just, I just, I guess I'm confused. I don't, I just don't have any sense.
If the money, if this article is not approved, then the, the money will stay in the reserve account. It will not be used. And therefore, there will be no budget for the recreation account. So going forward, this year, I suppose you can use the field. But I take it that it won't be mowed, that it won't be taken care of. That's what will happen. If the article is approved, then it will be a budget. There's no other way around it. This is a special town meeting, as I call it, to create a recreation budget.
There, there is a third option. It's either passes or it doesn't pass, or it could be reduced. And then that could be voted upon. But those really are the only three options we have tonight.
I'm sorry, can you reduce it? You cannot.
Yep.
You can reduce it, it's part of the article.
Paul, Paul?
Go ahead.
Um, also, I would like to point out that, um, the budget that was requested from, um, parks and recreation, um, had capital improvements in that. So this money is going toward capital improvements, um, the roofs, on your dugouts.
It had fifteen hundred dollars. The rest of the stuff would have been just normal expensive stuff. Like shooting the links, the dugouts and things like that, it was not a, it was reserves. It was just hard to operate. So anything big, like a major field redo, thick as the Ubo and a few other things? That's what that money would earmark for. Replace something like that with it. Over how much that money was loaning? I think it's like thirty-five hundred bucks. Thousand four hundred, life tech, like five hundred, four hundred, insurance is two hundred. And that alone left us, we had to spend about a thousand dollars to remove the roof. It's like, and our hope was to eventually replace the playground with new stuff. And that's how we, I mean, that's, we have to save money, raise money and put into the reserve. We have to save money, raise money and put into the reserve. I just think it's unfair to not give us any money and just say, "Take it from your savings." That was, that was marked for other stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Yes, sir?
Sir?
You have a discussion?
I have a question from Mike. If they did not have that donation reserve in the kidding, would they have been in the article unless it were... Is this for Mike to vote or don't he be able to move on of the maintenance?
In all likelihood, there would have been. The Budget Committee and the Select Board would have had an article that reflected that budget, yes.
So why wasn't the Park and Recreation asked about it?
Our meetings were public. I mean, we worked with the fire department, we worked with...
You were never invited, Mr. Davis.
Everybody is always invited, Jason.
Other discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I'm not, I did not hear what was said by this gentleman, but I'm just wondering, did Parks and Rec submit a budget request for town meeting?
Yes, they did.
Yes, answer that, yes.
A week before, like, I don't know.
Mr. Higgins, yes, sir? I recognize you, but please raise your hand if you want to speak.
And you were asked for a influence. I was asked, I didn't have a chance to be with the committee. Normally, we would have... Of course, the Park and Rec Committee meetings, we would want to come up with a budget first. We would present it, we would give an invite, present it to the Select Board and the Budget Committee. They would ask us questions, we would answer. And that's how the normal process has worked for many years. I know with COVID, things have changed a little bit, but we did not have that opportunity this year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Who was yours? Anyone? Mr. Higgins, you have anything further you'd like to say?
Well, I would be interested in what's the criteria to get a special town meeting?
I have numbers down there, but it's something that I don't know. I think it takes so many signatures, that's not...
That's correct. You're the select... If you convince two selectmen, you could have a special town meeting.
That's how you do it. Is there anyone else? Okay, if you favor the articles, do you wish to speak again?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I would ask the residents that we lower the amount just so we can ease with the line, and then we request a special town meeting. I think we would not accept this one, and then make another nomination. Now, the process would go.
Well, you can amend the money, amend if you want.
I would like to amend what?
What?
Read out the whole thing?
No, I got the demand. What do you wish to reduce it to?
To not exceed fifteen hundred dollars.
You want to reduce it to fifteen hundred? Okay, we have a second, we have an amendment, Arthur. We have a second on the amendment. We do, we have a second on the amendment. What the amendment will do, change the article from ninety-two hundred and thirty-four dollars to fifteen hundred dollars. Does everybody understand that?
Can I speak to...
You certainly may.
What?
That doesn't cover more.
No, you're still put yourself... If this passes, unless there's a special town meeting, we won't be able to mow the field. Another suggestion or another approach to this would be, you could seek a special town meeting to replenish these funds. You could pass this in its current form, you got everything you asked for in your budget, and we'll be able to maintain the field, the roof will be done and all of that. At next town meeting, you can have the question to resupply your reserve. And if the town votes to do it, it will happen. And if they don't, it won't. But at least we can move on and mow the field, and the kids can play basketball and everything else. That's my suggestion as opposed to changing this number.
We need, if we're gonna... Did I withdraw your amendment? You wish to do that? Mr. Higgins, you made a motion?
Yeah.
If you withdraw, go back to the nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. One minute. He's mine.
On good trust of the Select Board, I will reset my amendment.
He withdraws his motion, who in the second? Will he withdraw the second? Okay, we have the second, so we all let his hand up, and this gentleman over here, and then this gentleman over there.
Yeah, when they said that they would replenish the reserve, what is that figure?
Nine hundred, uh, ninety-two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
What, I guess what I'm after is, what was your raised money from?
Well, that was the number we gave him, it was around...
Do the same thing here.
What did you have in mind for recreation savings and what money you gave us in the foundation?
Nobody knows that money, that money was on them to start. Nobody knows who donated what.
You have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, we need to... I understand what you're saying, I get it, but if we let this get tied up right now, we both know, should we stop it? It's gonna get tied up in a political battle, and the only people that are gonna suffer is the kids that are gonna use that field. I would urge that you didn't pass it as it is right now, and then work with the Select Board and the Budget Committee to replenish that money and not let it trizzle out into the young children that are actually there to learn instead of farm.
Yes, sir? Did you have some comment? There you have it, okay. Now, I'll say it. Okay, the motion on the floor is to accept the article with ninety-two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Is there any more discussion? We have a request, and it's fine by me, to have a bridge back.
I have my question.
Yes?
I just wanted to ask about the timeline for replenishing. Is this something we have to wait until next annual town meeting, or would there be something that we could request now, and it would get in works, and we would see it before a year from now?
It would... The next time we have a meeting, it would be... It could be addressed, but it's not really going anywhere. If we don't address it until next year at this time, then that's... It would happen then, so...
I understand that, and that's why I wanted you to say, because I was afraid everybody would think, "Oh, let's bother you guys and set that meeting and get that money back right away."
That we'll be able to run the town, the park and rec will operate, and we'll address it in the future.
And the final decision as to whether that account gets replenished would be a public vote.
Correct.
Whether we decide to buy this Budget Committee or the Select Board.
That is correct.
I understand. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but in a reserve account, in order to spend that money, you have to have a special town meeting anyway. I believe I'm correct on that.
This is a special town meeting.
So, if the Parks and Rec apply for a grant that they didn't match ten thousand, you'd still have to come to a special town meeting in order to approve spending that money.
Absolutely right.
I don't believe the Park and Rec can officially apply for a grant. I think you voted for the selectmen to do that.
And the end of this discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Who is in charge of making the decisions as to how the money is spent for the Parks and Rec? Is it the Parks and Rec committee or is it the Select Board?
Well, the town manager actually does expenditures, but the budget that we built it on, we got from Jason.
So, I would ask for five years or so, I have to work my own, and maybe the wage set on seven fifty, and I volunteered my mind to help with the stuff over there. So I would contact the town manager and ask, "We need to buy some things, would you approve it to addition to your...?" All the labor is typically done in terms of higher rate.
And would that, would that situation continue?
That's what we hope.
If this were passed, Mr. Higgins would still make requests, or...
It doesn't change anything.
Yeah, it's just in accounting. We had this... We did, we just passed the monument lot, eight hundred dollars. We took it out of the reserve, because we've got this eight hundred dollars, it sits there every year. So now we put it to work. If we need something for the monument, we have to come back to you again and ask. It doesn't really change anything. Same thing with Park and Rec next year. If they need ten thousand dollars and they want to put in playground equipment, you guys are gonna have to vote on it. It's... That's the way we and the Budget Committee looked at it and said, "Let's just clean up this, this really an accounting thing." So... But it will be addressed.
Is there any other discussion? I would like to say I don't believe this discussion reflects on the quality of playground we have. We have a balance playground, and that's very nice, and they've done absolutely just. This is a financial discussion. If you favor the article, is that ready? Well, yes. If you don't favor it, now, we have a request for it now. If you oppose the article, well, no, bring the balancing, please.
Well, it isn't even a chain.
It's exactly the same. It's just not a coffee. That's why you're not a selectman.
I don't understand why everybody thinks this is a big deal. It doesn't change anything.
No, they don't understand. But it's the copycat mentality. But we did clean up some. What's that? Yeah, I mean, we did clean up a few copycats.
Have all voted to raise a vote? Is there anyone else who wishes to vote to have it? Anyone? And while there, county, we'll move on to Article thirty-five, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for sanitation, not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars. The sixteen thousand is a recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee. We have a motion. We have a motion, we have a second discussion. Anybody? Hearing and none, all those in favor of a motion, all those opposed, vote. Article thirty-six, see what sum of money the town will appropriate for office equipment from the Office Equipment Reserve, not to exceed two thousand dollars. And the recommendation by the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee is two thousand dollars. Do we have a motion? We have a motion to accept the article, is that ready? We have a second discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, vote. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will authorize the municipal offices and the fire department to donate yards of life to burn them via the pack. And this is recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the fire chief. Do we have a motion to accept the article? Any other second discussion? Yes, sir? Any discussion? Hearing and...
Do we have two yards of life?
Do we have two yards of life, fire team, tell us?
We received a donation from Newtown.
I'm sorry, can we talk if you said that?
I'm sorry, we received a donation from Newtown dedicated by around Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Gave us two sets of cutters, two sets of jaws, new pumps and new hoses. It was an extremely generous donation, so, no, we would not be out of anything. Those would get put away and stored for no reason, so that's right.
This is just paying it forward. The chief's gonna donate our old equipment to another town in need where we was donating equipment.
And this department does not currently have a set of jaws. Means the one we're doing has life, doesn't it?
Any other discussion? If you favor the article, is that ready? Please raise your hands. If you oppose, raise your hand, it's a vote. We... The vote is in. We have twenty... What was it?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two yeses and three dollars. Yeah, I said it. So the ninety-two hundred and thirty-four dollars will be the budget of the Recreation Committee. All right. Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal offices to dispose of town-owned property with a value of ten thousand dollars or less under such terms and conditions that they deem advisable. We have a motion? We have a second discussion? Hears?
Do we understand that the dozer is worth less than, less than ten thousand dollars?
No, we already have permission for the dozer.
We already have permission.
Yeah, and it's been listed... I think we're all kind of in the impression it's more of a springtime thing, but we'll see. The loader went right away.
Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, vote. Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will accept an annual donation of funds from the Miller and Martin Spark Trust Fund, and to accept the donor's condition that the funds be used to defray town school expenses and to appropriate said donation toward the town share of RSU eighty cars for FY two thousand and twenty-two, and the estimated donation is three thousand, fifty dollars. Yes, we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, vote. I believe those folks used to run the store, used to be a store over here on the corner. I think it was ninety-eight or...
Eighty-eight, yeah.
Yeah? And then, well, it's Saturday, a few years afterwards. Remember?
Yeah.
I remember that. Article forty, to see if the town will approve summer and winter maintenance for the Turner Road from the North Dexter Road, Route twenty-three, two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five feet to the driveway for the property listed as map four, lot eight four, and the Jackson Connor Road from the North Dexter Road, Route twenty-three, six tenths of a mile toward the Fox and Town Line. We have a motion? We do, we have a second? Discussion?
You said Jackson Corrigan Road, there's a difference between, we have a Jackson Corrigan, we have a Jackman Corrigan.
Well, this, the wanted ingredients of Jackson Connor Road.
Jackman.
Oh, Jackman, excuse me. That's quite right, you are quite right, my... Jackman Connor Road.
Because there is a Jackson Corrigan.
I don't know. There's a Jackman main, and there's a Jackson main, one way up there, the other way down there. But the correct pronunciation is Jackman Connor Road. And we have a motion, we have a second? Any more discussion? Hearing and none, all those in favor? All those opposed, vote. Article forty-one, to see if the town will approve summer maintenance for the Norton Mills Road from the East Central Road to the intersection of the Borough Road. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to accept the article? We have a second discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? Did you wish to speak? No, no. All those in favor? All those opposed, vote. And I believe that was...
Thank you, Paul.
Make the motion adjourned.
Thank you, folks.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Have a ready, please, Paul.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I did want to remind you of a couple things.